For March twentieth, twenty twenty five, order roll call.
Bontrager.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Alt.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Okay, approval agenda. Do I get a motion or whatever?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
A second.
Alt.
Yes.
Hutchinson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes. Okay, next one is approval of the minutes for September nineteenth to two thousand twenty-four. Any addition, corrections? If not, do I get a motion?
I'll so move with approval.
A second.
Second.
Okay.
Hutchinson.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, public comment.
That's where I can come up?
No, this will be except for the public hearing items, which is where you guys will come up.
No comments, okay. Okay, hearing. That's you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a brief PowerPoint that we're gonna go through and the applicant and neighbors, I believe, are here tonight, so obviously they'll follow up with any additional comments or any corrections to whatever misstatements I might say. The address is eight oh eight Cody Street and the two shots here, the one on my left, so to speak, obviously is the home, and then on the right part of the home, there's a little bit of open space, and then you'll see a garage. And interestingly, and this is gonna come up again in a few minutes, but one half of that garage, the northerly half sets on eight oh eight Cody Street. The other half of the garage, to the south, sets on the adjoining property. So the garage is actually on two parcels of property, which is rather unique from the standpoint of residential areas within the city. And again, we'll be, you'll be seeing that again in just a second. There we go. Not the greatest photo here, but essentially the property would be the, the home is on the southerly portion of this, of this drawing. And again, just in the middle of those two homes is the garage. Again, not the greatest aerial, but we're gonna be looking at some others in just a second. Just some general information about the address, eight oh eight Cody Street. It's a single-family dwelling. The property is owned R three, one-family residential. According to the county equalization records, it was constructed in nineteen twenty-six, and it has a lot size of thirty-six hundred square feet. In this particular district, six thousand square feet is required, and we did a little research. I didn't know how long this lot has been in existence, but it has been for, for some decades. So it's not as though this situation just recently was created. And again, you'll see some additional photos in a few, or graphics in a little while, but the dwelling, the existing single-family dwelling, has a rear yard setback of eight feet from the rear lot line and twenty feet's required. And again, this has pre-existed for, for decades. Okay, so we're not, we're not dealing with something new here. One of the issues that we're gonna be dealing with tonight, one of the variances that's been requested, is an increase in, in lot coverage. And right now, considering the home and that portion of the garage, about thirty-four percent of the lot is covered with buildings. The zoning ordinance in the R three allows up to forty percent. And as you'll see in a few seconds, the applicant is requesting a slight increase in that. The neighborhood in and of itself, it's surrounded primarily by a single-family dwelling. It's a very stable, very nice, nice neighborhood. And as I mentioned, the property and the property to the south share an accessory building, a garage, that again overlaps the southerly lot line of eight oh eight Cody Street and the northerly lot line of five oh three East River Street. There are two requests tonight for, for variances. The first one is to allow the addition of an attached garage, and with that garage, the lot coverage would go up to forty-seven percent. And again, the zoning ordinance provides for forty percent, so we're looking at a variance of seven percent in additional lot coverage. And then the second variance, looking basically to attach the garage to the home and to maintain the rear yard setback of the home. So the garage itself, just like the home, would maintain that, the rear yard setback of eight feet, as opposed to the ordinance requires twenty feet. But again, we're, we're not increasing it any greater than the existing home. The yellow just kind of depicts, you might say, the, the garage being located, budding or attached to the home. And then the green area to the rear, the solid green line shows the, the existing setback for the home, that eight feet, and then the somewhat dashed line shows the setback for the garage. And again, it maintains the eight, the eight feet. When we, when the ZBA looks at, at considering a variance, what they're looking for is that is there something exceptional about this particular piece of property or what's happening on the property? You know, is it exceptionally narrow, shallow? Is there certain shape elements that preclude or prevent the owner from building as, as required or as provided for by the ordinance? Are there some area limitations, et cetera? And so that's what we're gonna, we're gonna look at some, some issues with respect to this particular lot. Staff looked at the lot and has indicated it is smaller than a normal-sized lot. As I mentioned, it's thirty-six hundred square feet. The R three district requires six thousand square feet. Again, it appears as though this lot has existed as such for decades. So we're not dealing with a situation that's been self-created by the applicant or that has just, just happened. If we look at the neighborhood in general, we did some calculations. Actually, the average lot size is about seventy-two hundred square feet. So this is really a, a unique little parcel, somewhat exceptional from anything around it. As I mentioned, the site development has pre-existed for decades. The home, according to the equalization records, was built in nineteen twenty-six, so it's almost a hundred years old. And again, none of the existing situations were self-created. They were not created by the applicant. In terms of the jointly shared garage, as I mentioned, it does possess an older jointly shared accessory building, a garage, and I talked about its position both on the subject site as well as on the adjoining residential site, pretty much equal as we understand it. And that's really uncommon or unique when we look at other neighborhood areas. I did a, a basic survey using aerial photography of the approximate or the immediate neighborhood area and surrounding neighborhood areas, and I talked to some other folks, the building inspector and so forth. And this is pretty uncommon to find a situation in residential districts where you have a shared, a shared garage. And again, the situation of the shared garage was not self-created by the applicant. We looked at, is there any potential for expanding the lot to perhaps not have to implement some of these requested variances? And really, there is no lot expansion potential. We have Cody Street on the west, which is publicly owned. We have a public alley to the north, publicly owned. And then both on the east and south, the properties are developed residentially. So essentially, there's no opportunity for additional land area to be, to be added to this. Relative, again, to consideration of a variance, we looked at the, the different review standards. I'll go through those quickly, just to see whether or not, if the variances were granted, what sort of impact might it have on the surrounding properties or on the neighborhood? First one deals with light and air impacts and staff's understanding or staff's feelings that this project, as desired, is not anticipated to cause a reduction in light and air to adjoining properties. The garage that's being proposed, according to the site plan that you have in your packet, is twenty-four by twenty-four. It's pretty common with respect to garages in the area, by the way. Terms of street congestion, there's no change in land use here, so therefore, we didn't feel there'd be any traffic level increases anticipated. Terms of fire and public safety codes will, if this attached garage were to be built as proposed, would it result in fire and public safety issues? And again, or I shouldn't say again, it will be subject to the city building and fire code, so we don't see an issue there as well. In terms of property value impacts by allowing this garage to be built as requested, it will increase, obviously, the value of the subject site. We believe it's anticipated to have a positive impact on the, on the property and the neighborhood stability. Again, attached garages are fairly common in this neighborhood. In terms of public health, safety, and welfare, somewhat similar to another one we looked at, again, it's subject to the city building and fire codes. And also, in terms of the design of the dwelling and the proposed attached garage, very consistent with dwellings in the, in the neighborhood. In your packet, we did have letters of support for this project. These came from four thirty-two East River Street, five oh three East River Street, and five oh five East River Street. It's my understanding, some of these folks may be here tonight. I, I don't know. If the ZBA were to grant the variances, staff, we do have some possible considerations, some conditions for your consideration. This first one probably doesn't have to be attached because it will come about as a result of the building code. But nonetheless, we, we did attach it for your consideration, and per compliance with the city building code, the existing accessory building, the garage, and the new garage will have to be fire-rated. And again, this will be a, a building code requirement, but we wanna make you aware of that, and we feel it's a valid claim or a valid condition. We're looking at a situation where initially, the new garage and the old garage will be about five feet apart. And because they're both being used for the storage of automobiles, other types of equipment, possibly gasoline and so forth, we just felt, and again, the building code's gonna require this as well. In terms of open space between the proposed new garage and the existing garage, and it's our understanding that at some point in time, the existing garage is gonna be torn down, but we have no idea when that's gonna occur, so we've assumed it'll stay there for a while. There'll be a five-foot difference between those two garages, which is fine. It's not a, a big deal from the standpoint of the building and fire codes. But we're saying that until such time as that other garage is removed, that that five feet needs to be retained as open space. Obviously, it can be lawn, but can't be used for the storage of firewood, outdoor, you know, other equipment and so forth, because of a safety issue. We wanna be able to get back there if, if needed. And then lastly, and we wanna make it very clear, staff did, that if this, if these variances are granted, let me read this. "The record shall indicate that the requested variances, if approved, shall not negate any existing use and maintenance agreements or arrangements written or verbal that may exist between the owners of eight oh eight Cody Street and five oh three East River Street. These are the properties upon which the existing accessory building is located." Perhaps there aren't any written or verbal agreements between the two, but we just don't, and I'm not saying you do this, folks, but we just don't wanna have the folks coming back saying, "Well, you know, the ZBA granted us this variance, and therefore, he's built this new garage. I don't want him using the old garage." That's between these folks, okay? And, and not, not you folks. It's, we'd like the record to indicate that if you grant the variance. And lastly here, for the, for the benefit of the audience, once I'm finished, and I will be just in a second here, the ZBA, if they have questions, they'll ask them. Chairman will open the public hearing portion of the meeting, will allow you folks to talk if you wish to. Initially, we'd like to see the applicant make the first, be the first one to speak. He can add to or take away from whatever I may have said. Then the chairman will open it up for public comments. He'll close the public hearing, and then they will deliberate, so. What you're dealing with tonight, and I will close here, is you're authorizing, you're looking at authorizing an increase in lot coverage of forty, to forty-seven percent over the forty. You're looking to authorize, or he's looking to authorize, the addition of the proposed attached garage to be constructed with a rear yard setback of eight feet. This is consistent with the rear yard setback of the existing dwelling to which the garage will be attached. In other words, it's just a continuation of, of the home, you might say. And then again, this last one are just those three conditions that we talked about, that the, the two facilities be fire-rated, that the five-foot, the open space be maintained as such until such time as that the older building is removed. And that the ZBA, we will put in minutes that if you were to grant the variances, that this does not negate any existing written or verbal agreements between the two property owners as to how that building, the older building is being used. And with that, I'm finished.
Do we have any questions or comments between us?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Would the lot size, like what's taking up the lot, still be forty-seven percent with the old garage gone?
The old garage is gone, it probably would take him back down to the forty, would take him closer to what's, right.
Where it is.
Yeah, we counted the forty percent, forty-seven percent to include the existing garage. So once that's gone, he'll come back down to, he'll be close, if not on, what is provided for by ordinance, which is a positive.
Anything else?
Could you show the slide again where you mentioned what the actual?
Pardon?
Can you, can you show the slide again? I think it's one before this one.
Tell me which one.
What's it pertaining to? What, what slide?
It was the one just before the one we saw where it talks about what we're actually being asked to, the variant, variances we're considering. There you go.
Anything else?
That's good, thank you.
And we'll open the meeting for public comments. If you gotta want to say something, please state your name and address.
David Kidwalder, eight oh six Lafayette Street Lowell. And we bought the house about three years ago, and we're finally, I mean, we shared the garage. We've been sharing off for that time, and we've went through two different neighbors with him, and haven't had no problem sharing the garage, but we wanted to build something that we can park our cars in. And the end result was Justin building the garage and me building the garage, clear up the lot, get rid of that old garage. It's, it's had its time, and it'd just make the both lots better. And, I mean, you gotta also look at when he builds a garage, he's gonna be within two foot of a property line. So that's another thing to look at in the end result. I think it's in the little paper I sent you, kinda, my chicken scratch is on there. But yeah, I mean, it's gonna clear up the lot, and it was built actually for, a family lived here, built the house back here for a daughter, and they split the garage. So that's how it kinda happened. Yeah, so decades ago.
Yeah, back in the old days.
Yeah, it was fine. But now it's, they're all gone, and it's been through a few different owners. But I mean, to rectify everything, I think it would be a, a great way to go, and I hope you guys do approve it. Got any questions for me?
When's the potential time of the existing garage to be gone?
The existing garage to be gone would probably be when Justin decides to build his garage. That'd be my thing. I don't wanna rip it down and have him nowhere to park a car.
Okay.
He still uses it, he still gets in there, and I just have my siding and stuff stored in my half. So yeah, I mean, I don't wanna have to rip it down to build my garage. Not really, 'cause that would ruin his half of everything.
Questions here?
Yeah.
I drove by the other day, and I noticed that there's a new curb cut and a new approach port between the road and the sidewalk.
Last year, I did get a garage approval to build it, but they wanted to knock me down five foot and made the garage fifteen foot wide. So I says, so I go, and that's kinda really too small, so I, we, me and the wife talked and decided to try to put in for a variance to get it to twenty foot.
Did the city put that in, or you?
I put it in.
Put it in.
But I didn't do it.
I read somewhere in this package, and I don't remember where now, something about pole barn construction of this.
Well, I was just tossing up between garage and pole barn. I think my first initial one was put in for a pole barn. And I, I decided to kinda go with a stick building. I think it's better than a pole barn.
Is pole barn construction approved in that neighborhood?
I mean, as long as it fits in with the...
I'm sorry?
As long as the aesthetics fit in with the neighborhood.
I mean, you would never know it was a pole barn if I did do it. We put siding and everything on it. It's got, the wife has to match the house.
Be post-construction perhaps, instead of a normal house construction.
Yeah.
So did you already get a variance for the first garage that was only?
No, I, they shot me, I got approval for a fifteen-foot wide one.
Okay.
And then I, that's where we wanted to go into the variance to make it a twenty-foot, 'cause fifteen-foot wide's kind of narrow for a garage, if you want anything else in it. But that's why we want for the variance, because it'd still give us five foot from the building, but like he says, we're gonna have to build a firewall in between both buildings. So you gotta get fire-rated drywall and everything in there.
Any other?
Good?
Good.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna say anything? Didn't state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Joe Behren. The owner correction is four twenty-three East River Street. I actually live across the street from both Dave and Justin. And I've lived there, my family's lived there for over sixty years, and it's been a nice, quiet neighborhood since Dave and Tina moved in three years ago.
Yeah, I think it's been about three years.
They have put a lot of improvements into their home and property. I feel that it would increase the value of their home, which would increase the value of the street, which would increase the value of the neighborhood, both aesthetically and just personally, I think it'd be a good thing for the community, at least for my area anyways. I live on a corner of river and Cody, so I'm right across the street from both of them. So I support it.
Name and address.
Hi, I'm Justin Whitley, five oh three East River Street. So I just kinda wanted to answer your question. We're looking between three to five years is when we wanna start our garage. Right now, it's just, we're going, my wife and I are going, both going back to college, so once we're through that, we'll have the finances to do that part. But we both really want the garage to go through. We think it would be a good way to finally separate these properties instead of being attached together. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not?
Oh, he's with me.
If not, closing, public part of it, top twenty, either a motion or discussion.
I have a question for the city. Justin, was it? I mentioned three to five years planned to build a garage. Is there a, if we make that a condition, is that somehow, is he compelled to that, or is it more of a suggestion?
From the staff standpoint, I would say no. It's just, it's hard to, you know, three, three years comes down the road, five years come down, comes down the road, and it's not taken, it's just an issue. I guess I would look at it, as long as what they're doing now meets the building codes is safe, then, you know, I would go with that, okay?
Mallory, do you have?
And I'm gonna trust him that eventually, and eventually it will, it will. It's, it's an older facility, it's gonna come down.
We do have legal via Zoom as well. Mallory, did you have anything to add to that as well?
No, I don't. I think that, you know, you guys are covering all the things you should be covering and considering the right things, so I don't have anything to add at this time.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, do I get a motion? I can't do it.
I'll make that motion to include all the suggestions about how to, you know, that can't use the existing one for firewood and, and all of these things. But I agree with all of the, your requests for it. I went by that, and I thought, it was, it was painted the same as your house, but you had the space between them. And I thought, I don't know, it must be theirs.
Yeah, I couldn't figure that out either, 'cause the garage looked like your house and it's way over there.
The guy that did the siding, I mean, his aunt lived there, and he did the garage too.
I think it's a example of love thy neighbor.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Just for, just so we're clear, Mr. Bontrager, so we're looking, your motion was made based on the conditions that staff outlined? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Hutchinson.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bontrager?
Yes. There you go. Very good. Time to be a mill's permission, get busy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, we'll be in touch, okay? You're welcome to stay, but also free to go.
Thank you. Taking you on for new business, new business.
Yes.
Voting the officers.
Yep, routine yearly first of the year business. Currently, we have Nichols as chair and Alt as vice chair. You guys are more than welcome to elect.
I've done how many years?
Officers, or do a continue, totally up to you.
Okay, I've said, I've done it this many years, might as well keep on doing it.
We would just need a, a motion to reelect and reappoint.
Okay, second? Okay.
Bontrager?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hutchinson?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is voting for meeting dates.
Yes.
Any questions or a motion?
For our meeting?
Yeah, for next year, or for this year, I'm sorry. It's in the pack. Yeah, they get the dates.
These have to be posted for the public.
Is that what these dates are, all the third Thursdays?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
I like that.
Very bad, back of it, there's a, I don't have, I can't find it right this second, but it's there.
Okay, I see.
There.
August isn't the third Thursday. Is it? I think it's the second Thursday. Let's take a look here.
Well, I don't know, I don't have calendar handy. Why do?
That would be correct, yep, so we would need to change that one to the twentieth.
Okay.
Twenty-first? Yes.
Okay, any other corrections? Sorry, made a mistake.
That was easily corrected.
It was.
Good catch.
Okay, do I have a motion then? Who are the corrections?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Okay, then we vote on it.
Hutchinson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Bontrager?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a fee proposal. Way allocated, it's about time city makes some money in this deal.
Yes, so this has been a, a few-year project, and our department decided that maybe it was time to look into our fees. So we completed a survey, looked through twelve other municipalities and calculated the, the data presented in your packet. We wanted to take this proposal to the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission prior. commission prior to sending it to council, um, seeing how a lot of these fees, um, these applications are, are coming before you guys, so we wanted to get your guys' opinions and/or approval prior to, um, moving it through to a council level. It is obviously council's decision, um, whether to truly make these increases, um, but we wanted to gather the board's feedback.
Okay. I, I think it's very appropriate, yeah, I mean.
What is the zoning verification letter?
Zoning verification letter, um, we get inquiries, um, whether it be, um, from potential buyers, or, um, could be just investment companies, or corporations that are just looking to gather information about properties that may be for sale or may not be for sale. They're looking to, um, sometimes they ask if, if the use could be changed from, let's say, a, a shopping center to a hospital, or what it's allowed on that, and if the current conditions of, um, the structure, or what would be allowed. So, it takes some investigating into the ordinance, and they request it in a letter form. That way, they have it to go along with their, their property.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of times lenders and mortgage companies will want a letter from us, uh, indicating how the property is zoned, whether or not there have been any sort of conditions attached to the property. Though, I'm assuming it's, you know, it's part of their loan package, they wanna just make sure that, that, uh, that they have the correct information regarding the property.
Does that happen for residential and commercial, or most?
Yes, yes, uh-huh. I know there's a couple mortgage companies, for example, in town here, it's, it's like every one of their, um, loans they make ends up require, uh, they ask for a letter from us. And so, there's some research that goes into it, some time, and, uh, in addition to ju, the letter itself.
Yeah, and we also do get inquiries to, um, from those mortgage companies about if the lot can be split into so many lots, or if it can't be. Um, I think there is some sort of loan program that some of our residents go through that require it to only be able to be one lot as well, so that would fall into those zoning verification letters.
Just a guesstimate, how much time do you think goes into a letter like that? Just an average, like, I'm not talking in-depth, can you do this?
Yeah, so I think we did provide that information, let me just look at that chart. Um, again, it's, it's based on, based on, um...
Should be on there.
Every case, but it does say, um, on average, about two hours.
Okay.
Yep.
Is it time that we start paying for what they're, they want?
I guess, um, I have a little different opinion on the subject, and that is, um, I don't know how many of these we get per year, but my, my experience is not so many. So, um, an increase in fees of a hundred percent would only result in a few hundred dollars a year of extra revenue. And, uh, I think we wanna encourage people to apply for variances and have them properly reviewed, instead of saying, oh my God, it's gonna cost a bunch of money to get it, I'm just gonna try to run this under the table and hope I don't get caught. So, I don't really see the, the benefit of, um, raising the fee, and we're not totally out of line with the exception of a comparison to manistee, those people aren't afraid to charge for things.
The only, I, I guess, the only thing to that point would be, um, a lot of our application fees aren't covering our publication fees, so, um, for, for example, this case that came in front of us, um, we're required to post in, in the paper at least fifteen days prior, um, which, um, the newspaper ads range anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty, and that's just for one posting. So, for this case, we've actually had two postings, because we had to post last month, but last month's meeting was canceled. So, then I had to post again for the cancellation, which I roped in this meeting. So, the first publication, didn't, the one fifty application fee didn't even cover that first publication. And that's just for the newspaper, that's not counting the postage, um, for mailing of the letters up to the residents within three hundred feet, so.
Well, I got that. The, uh, the other thing I would say in response to that is, uh, anybody who's doing this is, has property in Cadillac, they're already paying property taxes, which are not insub, not unsubstantial, based upon my experience.
Not everybody applies for Cadillac residence.
No, but they pay taxes on the property if they have.
Eventually, but still, why shouldn't the city recoup the money it cost them for me and you as taxpayers, get it back for what?
Public services, I mean, there are other things that we don't, uh, pay for. So, I just, I raise the point, we're not gonna decide, right? You just wanted comments from us.
Yeah, and if you choose to, to do a motion of support for the fees, or a motion of support, but maybe tweaking kind of the fee schedules, but, yes.
We're not deciding, we're just...
You, you, you as a board, um, unfortunately, do not have the official stamp for us to be able to decrease, increase, or...
Just wanted to make sure what you were asking of us, yeah.
How long has that, that fee, those fees have been the same?
Ooh, I would wait...
They've been the same, pretty much the same for a long, long time. I think one of the biggest issues that Danielle, and she's mentioned it, are the publication fees. That's the kicker, and you take like the planning commission, some of the issues that come before the planning commission also have to go to council.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at, at, at least two publications, and so, a lot of times, it'll be a total of three, four, five hundred dollars or more, uh, and it does not cover the permit fees, and...
Right.
I guess it boils down to, you know, who should be responsible? The public at large, or the applicant?
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's a toughie, and, uh...
You know, with everything, all the prices and everything raised, that have been raised in the past, what, five years?
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it's out of line to bump it up fifty bucks. I really don't. And for that letter, for, for the time it is to investigate and stuff, I mean, there's one fee on here for fifteen dollars, that's probably, you know, if you put on there twenty bucks for that, for that letter, I think that's more than a, appropriate. So, that's just my thought.
Is it costing the city roughly fifty dollars, or is it just this, your personnel is taking time out of their day?
Yeah, so if you...
There's, there's, it's not costing really, because they've got a salary, and if that application didn't come in, it, they're still being paid by the hour salary rise, correct?
Yeah, are, you're, you're speaking specifically to that zoning...
The zoning letter, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, you don't have a special person that you hire to do this?
No, no, it would just be a, a staff member that is taking the time out of their normal, um, daily tasks for that.
And is there any way?
Which is still in the scope of, of the department, it's not asking a different department to perform that, but...
And is there any way to actually charge the publication fees as needed to the applicants?
That would...
So, that, just like this one, if it has to be scheduled a second time, then the applicant needs to pay that, versus adding it so that it's in excess?
Did you see any of that when there was research?
Yeah, it, it, it does happen in the state, and with some communities, um, you know, it's a possibility.
Cause I mean, as the Cadillac news raises their prices, or whatever, that could be a different amount.
Right, right, it, and it, you know, it depends on, on the notice itself, like, if I write the notice, Danielle beats me up, and, and we gotta capsulate this a little bit, cause I have a tendency to use too many words.
He's a great writer.
And, um...
Expensive writer, we'll put it that way, I'm just kidding.
Right, yeah, right, but it's, yeah, it's, it's, that's the biggest issue, is the publication cost. I'm imagining one of these days, the state will change the law. Unfortunately, as newspapers kind of, we see them less and less, and I don't like that, but that's the way it goes. I can see that ultimately, there's gonna be a change, uh, and there'll be other ways, the internet, or whatever, where these notices will be, will be published, and, uh, but until that happens, we're, we're bound, uh, to put them in the newspaper, and, uh, and it is a source of revenue for the newspaper. Uh, so, it, it's a toughie, uh, and, and they do vary, uh, depending on the issue and so on and so forth.
Okay, anything else? If not, we do get a motion.
And if you don't, it, um, I don't want you guys to, to feel uncomfortable by any means, so you definitely don't need to motion. My only, um, I guess, suggestion, or what I was looking for out of this, um, conversation, was just general feedback. Um, so if you wanted any feedback that you wanted, um, passed on to council, um, and/or planning commission meets next Monday, mon, next Monday, and we're going to ask, present them this and ask them the same for feedback, so if there was any feedback that you wanted on the record, um, now would be a chance for that.
And we can indicate that there was concern, there was, on the one hand, that there was the thought of, you know, it's, raising the fees basically is consistent with what's happening, that there might be some additional options, such as the one presented. Conversely, there was also some concern that, uh, you know, we, we don't wanna harm the public, so to speak, and we, we wanna promote growth and development, so we'd, we'd be happy to have the minutes reflect.
I was just gonna say, Danielle, can you just capture those comments in the minutes and just leave it at that?
Yeah.
That seems to me the best way to do it.
Yeah, we definitely were not looking to make anyone uncomfortable, or any, any official motion, just simply gathering feedback.
There you go.
Okay. I just think there's a way to do the publication fees without, cause I mean, there's a lot of these that are doubling, and like he said, there's people who either are gonna look at that and go, well, never mind, it's too much money, just taking a chance, I'm gonna get told no, or, and I mean, we don't want that, we want people to come forward.
Yeah, absolutely, um, and, and to, to your point of having it based on whatever the publication costs, um, would be at that given time that the application is presented, um, that too would have to be written into our ordinance to state that that is what the fee would be, is the hundred-dollar base fee plus publication costs, or some sort of verbiage.
Sure, cause I'm, I'm sure even the zoning board of appeals, that hundred and fifty dollars includes the publication fee right now, so that would probably have to be modified. If you were gonna, you know, charge a publication fee separately, it would probably go down, yes, or no?
A publication fee separately?
Yeah, if you were gonna charge a publication fee separately, plus the current rate of a hun, I mean, would you charge them still a hundred and fifty?
I would almost say, like, this is almost like the base price, right, and then whatever greater. So, the zone, for example, like the zoning board of appeals, application fee is a hundred dollars fee, a hundred dollar, a hundred and fifty dollar fee, plus or minus publication fee. So, if your publication comes in at two hundred and fifty dollars, then you would pay...
The two?
The extra hundred dollars from the one fifty.
And in many of these issues, we also have legal fees. We have, the city attorney will help us, um, or they will, you know, they will draft, for example, copies of, uh, resolutions, uh, notices, et cetera. They'll review maybe information that we put together, so there's additional costs there as well. And they're, it's, you know, they're an important part of this whole process.
Yeah, just having the attorney, I don't know what the cost is, however, set, the attorney having her sit there and listen to a meeting on that cost.
She, she is here.
Yeah, and we appreciate her.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I guess we go to old business, any old business?
I do have some good, kinda good news, the, you may recall the, the credit union, you approved the, uh, the parking space variance, but you denied the sign setback variance. They did revamp the site plan a little bit, so they were able to meet the setback requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, awesome.
I saw its proceeding, so everything's good.
So, it came out okay.
Okay, board members' comments. Any comments? Okay?
Nope.
There's no public, so I guess it can't be any public comments. Adjourned.
Thank you.
Now I get, go to work.
You're starting?
So...
You're starting work now?
What's going on there?
Well, I suppose there at three thirty.
By the Family Fair Plaza, it used to be Fox Studios years ago.
It's where the apartments are going?
Is that, is that where it's going?
You're, you're talking like right, behind Rite Aid and across from...